Or the, the, once construction is complete. And I've added a little bit of contingency to that. You're going to see contingency show up a couple of times. We're always going to keep talking about contingency as we continue to do more estimating. That is because we're still very early. Everything that you see in green is a budget number. That is our best practice guess of what we should plan for, but it is not anything that's been priced in any kind of market condition. So we've not yet engaged a furniture supplier to, to tell us what our budget should be. So this is reliant on what we know to be true about schools and what things have cost in a historical perspective. So that's all budget placeholders with some contingency built in. So when you take those two numbers from the design phase fee total and the construction phase total, and you add it into the bottom where the summary is, we end up with a resulting total project cost, including a 5% owner contingency for construction. We're at about $55.7 million, which is within about $1 million of the 54.6. Recognizing that there's almost 300, $3 million in this budget of contingency that's unassigned expense at the moment, that's just to manage a little bit of risk this early in the project. We feel pretty good that moving into design development with the decisions that we've outlined for you and the savings, that we are tracking well within the right range for this project to be executed for $54.6 million. We'll have another round of pricing after this that will continue to hone in and to close the gap even further. Questions?
Emily, back on the site layout plan?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we talked about like the, the field and everything kind of rotating to the west.
Um, we did talk about that. We have not, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get back there so we can pull it up on the slide, so everybody can look about it. There's a couple of things about the site plan. We absolutely can rotate that. I think that's certainly a decision that we can address moving forward. We have also talked about the site, making sure that however we place the field on the site, that it wouldn't eliminate the future potential for a track around that field. So that's all under consideration. You can see there's a lot of green space around that field right now that does give us the flexibility to rotate. It also gives us the flexibility to make sure that we don't do anything in this project that would prevent you from adding a track around that field in the future. I'll also note that we're still waiting for a little bit of final data on the subdivision of that south parcel that y'all have recently acquired. And so there's some modifications probably to that south parking lot that will come as a part of that subdivision. It's my understanding that the seller is going to retain some of the, the southernmost part of that parcel and that we're just sort of waiting for the, the final location of that property line.
The adjustment to that would be minimal?
Yep.
When I've seen the initial survey and design of that, it's very close to what you're looking at right there. I was hoping to have that in hand tonight. Maybe you recall that whenever we had that conversation, it was about two and a half acres and that's where we want to end up. Actually, we want to end up with a little more than that because there's been a donation of some acreage for there, for that as well, for the future, which is going to help us a little bit, okay?
Mm-hmm.
A cup, I'm, or, I'm sorry, Casey, I've got two or three things, but.
Go ahead.
I want you, I know, I want you to finish up if you want to.
I, that was my only question was just about rotating the layout.
On our VE list, we're still list, we're still showing canopy removals. And I believe that our last conversation was not necessarily remove everything, but minimize some.
Yep.
So some of those costs will need to go back in, I, I don't, according to what I'm seeing right there.
Uh, and I'll maybe let Vanoy speak to the, the nuance of the canopies. We talked about being real clear about how much canopy we needed and also the potential for alternates if we wanted to expand or add more canopy later. So I think we have heard that concern from the board with regards to eliminating the canopies completely. And in the renderings, we are still showing some canopies because it certainly feels appropriate to have some level of canopy for both bus riders and car drop-off riders. So we can talk about the, whether the cost, how you accounted for.
Yeah. What's in there now, Mark, is still taking them all out. But the good thing about that is the canopies is a real simple thing for an add alternate. I think also we can work together with fine tuning, what's the finish, what's the profile, how frequent are the columns? Do we need a concrete foundation, which I do have in there, which we probably don't even need. So yeah, that'll be one of the things that we work through the, once again, the design development, we'll work together on. Maybe that's most effective as we can.
I just want to make sure that we continue to have, keep that on the table.
Yep.
Because that is important. The second item is, I've been speaking with our food and nutrition person, and I think I've emailed you about this, we have to have an external freezer.
Yes.
Because this is the central freezer location for the district.
Yep.
And she gave some specifications for the size.
As I can.
And I don't know if you've got that, I can't read that little print.
Can you not?
No.
I can't, I don't have a, my, oh, is this not, I can't get it to work.
We do, we do have that.
It is.
Okay.
So the, these three rooms right here by the kitchen in this dark purple is dry storage freezer and cooler.
Okay.
In there.
One of the things that, and we can talk about this later, one of the things that she's very concerned about is that we have an external door to that freezer. So that, and it, and that it has a loading dock opportunity.
Yep.
Will cause we, we centralize our frozen goods and then move them out.
Distribute them to your other schools.
Distribute ourselves.
Yeah. So, and that is a, that's a really good segue to some of what's coming next in the process. So with y'all's approval of the status of the project to date, we would move into design development. And this is where we got really detailed in the figuring out of all of those things. And so in our future in design development is meetings with child nutrition, meetings with, very detailed meetings with technology. And we're going to talk about door hardware, door by door through here, and continued discussions with maintenance department, getting very specific about the decisions and the pieces and parts that need to go into the building and vetting things like, does the freezer have a door to the exterior? Is it accessible from a loading area, et cetera, like that? So there will be some adjustments to the plan in response to those things, but we will have departmental, very detailed meetings to cover all of those things and to get feedback from people that we've not yet heard from. So we start with what DPI says as the sort of baseline square footage, and then we're going to continue to layer on feedback from your district folks and school folks and everybody that you tell us to talk to. And we've got a little bit of a script of all of those meetings that we need to follow to make sure that we're getting all the information that we need. And it's really the last kind of working design phase where we're, where we're sorting through all of that information so that when we go into the final phase after that, we're really producing our documents in great detail so that Vanoy can then build it after that. So at the end of the design phase, we're going to repeat this entire cost estimating process. We're going to give Vanoy another set of documents. They're going to be more detailed, they're going to have a lot more pages to it, and we're going to have a lot more information, very detailed engineering information, which is not something we typically have in the schematic design phase yet. And so we will go through, Vanoy will do their estimate. We also, in our contract, have a parallel estimate by another third-party cost estimator. And so the design development phase is when we'll see the most detail in the cost estimating. We're going to have two of those that run in parallel to each other independently. And at the end of that, there's a little bit of a reconciliation that happens. If our cost estimator has picked up on something in our documents that differs from what Vanoy has, has seen in the documents, we've sort of reconcile that. It allows us to check and make sure our takeoffs are all lining up from one estimator to the other. And it gives everybody a level of confidence that we're not just reliant on one source for our cost estimating, even though Vanoy does an extremely thorough job in putting the plans out to market and getting subcontractor feedback. We're also going to have another source of cost estimating to help us and to help build that confidence that we want heading into the final phase of the document. So we're going to get really in the weeds and we're going to get really detailed in design development. And we're going to see opportunities for other savings. And so they may not be the big moves of reducing 10,000 square feet, which is what we're doing today, or the mechanical system changes, but we're going to see a lot more, because we have a lot more detail, we're going to see a lot more opportunities to make sure that we are making the best use of the budget that you have and not overdoing something or something. And we can get some alignment there if we need to.
Do you have a, like a 3D model started or anything for it yet, or is that kind of a further done? Are you have that now?
Yes. Yeah, everything we draw is in 3D, so we just are looking at flat views of that, but these renderings have all come from a 3D model that we've generated. And that's how our entire team works. So our engineers work in that model as well collaboratively, so we're all in the same spot.
What's the DOT status on the road entrance?
We are still waiting for some feedback from DOT. The traffic impact analysis is in progress. So our team has started with a lot of the data collection and the traffic counting and things like that, that we need. I think the most recent meeting that we've had with DOT, they were, responded very favorably to the property acquisition that allowed us to fix some of their initial concerns about the way the traffic was going to work on the site. They, they are a little bit cautious because at the time that acquisition hadn't been finalized yet, and so it's a little hard for them to make commitments around property that we don't yet own. But that's all in progress. And so we're doing a little bit of our reporting and analysis, and then we will follow up with DOT on what we learned from the data that we've collected.
Okay.
Sounds good.
There are serious, and you understand this, there are serious concerns about the fact that we have a $54.6 million cap. It's a hard stop at this point. Now, I look down the road and I see funding flexibility possibilities in different areas, but we're living in a, a little bit of a questionable funding universe at this point in a lot of ways. And so I, I need for, I need to reassure this board and our public that you all understand 54.6 is our hard stop. And TJ, you and I had a, of a very pleasant email conversation about what general, is it general construction?
Conditions, general conditions.
General conditions cost. Okay. Could you give us just elevator explanation of what that means, or am I putting you too much on the spot?
No, 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 no.
Could you, could you come up to the mic, please?
So, general conditions is basically the cost of what it costs for us to manage the job. All the staffing, anything and everything required to show, get contractors to show up, finish the job, do it on time, on budget, and, and deliver the job. That's, that's ultimately what that, the staff cost for that. Fee in that, because that was the two conversations. Fee is what we're paid to show up and that, that's money Vanoy has compensated to do the work. So that's, that's the difference between the two.
You described it in the email in simple language for this guy to understand, and that is the fees are profit.
Right.
The general conditions is what it costs to do work.
You got it. Yep.
All right. See, I had to think in small bits.
No, I'm, I'm with you, and that's why I try to chunk it down that way to make it, yeah.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I read in there that both companies have agreed to limit themselves to a fee cap on this. Am I correct?
Right. I mean, ultimately, we, for the cost of work, we limited it to the 45 million.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Now, I just, I want to bring all those pieces out in the front, right?
Sure.
For everybody to hear.
Absolutely. That's a beauty of this process, I mean, it's open book. We want to try to answer any questions y'all have.
Okay.
For sure. And heard loud and clear on the, on the budget.
Thank you.
I guess the question I would have, and I know you don't have a, a crystal ball or anything, but just, you know, what is, what has your history, your experience taught you? I'm in construction as well. For me, projects that kind of start out with budget issues tend to fight budget issues the whole time. And so I'm, I'm nervous that we're going to get in a situation where, you know, we've, we went through a round of cost cutting, still didn't quite get, you know, below that threshold we needed to get to. I know there's going to be more and more cost cutting that we have to fight. I also know there's going to be a lot of things that, you know, that, that haven't even shown up yet as line items in this budget, right? There's, there's conditions we're going to uncover that we have no idea about. And so that, you know, that contingency number, we're showing 5%, it's really, it's really more like, with Mark's hard cap at 54.6, it's really more like 2% of contingency. And so it just, that's, you know, what are you guys seeing? Is that, is that how all these school projects go?
It, it is, especially right now. It does seem to be that way, yes. I would say you are, you are dead on. I mean, that, it is something we will have to stay diligent on.
Right.
We will have to stay on top of, I, I do think we will, you're right. When we get to DDs, we'll probably have to do another haircut to trim it back up. But that's the whole purpose of this process. It, it is that collaborative effort along the way. I mean, even multiple conversations outside of what y'all know about where, you know, LS3P and Vanoy, we're talking, I mean, we're still talking about finishes on the inside right now, in, in a good way. I mean, that, that's what, that's what you pay us to do, right? Is, is to work through those things. So it's a healthy thing, healthy conversation to have, and it's actually good we've got another estimator looking at it too. They, they can, they may see something we missed, right? And that's, it's good to have that, that level of confidence with, with two estimates. I would definitely say it's, it's going to be a challenge, but I think, I feel we can meet that challenge. The other thing you're not seeing, we also inside our 47 million have, have a 2%, 2% contingency inside there, construction contingency. Um, it's, it's a little bit, but it's a little bit more of a, hopefully make you feel a little better about it. I mean, we, we, like Jim also said, we are, we do try to fill the gaps. We, we know their documents are not complete, so we try to fill those gaps. Are we perfect? Heck no, but, but we try.
Right.
Let me, let me add one more thing to that real quick. That's a great question. I think, I think the TV commercials say past performance is no guarantee of future results on the, the financial guys. The last three times we've done this, twice at Western Carolina University, and in a job we just built for, our bid for Caldwell Community College. And that job was roughly 50 million. The stuff at, at Western's 22 million, I think. But each of those, when we got the final bids, and when we get the final bids, we're all going to be in the room, you guys will be there, we're all open together, it's completely open book. Each of those three times, the numbers came in under budget. And, and as I said, that's, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we've got the worst case scenario. I'm not saying that at all. What I am saying is I think we have a responsible, conservative budget in doing what TJ said, trying to fill in the gaps. And as the process goes, it's all eyes open trying to figure that out. But yeah, well aware of the tight budget, well aware that you guys don't want to be in the newspaper as a job that went from picket number 54 to 64 to 74. That's not an op, that's not a possibility. So we've got to work, deal with it, make sure that doesn't happen. I think I cut you off, maybe one more question.
You're good. Well, so my, my other question was like on your, your pool of subcontractors that you went out to on this, knowing we're a little bit of a remote area, maybe different from the, you know, the Asheville market, or what percentage would you say of subs that participated in the budgeting and that you'll expect to use for this are going to be your, you know, your steady addy reliable partners that you guys use all the time versus which ones are going to be new players?
So we, we have a broad net, I guess, to answer that question. I mean, we're not only local, and like Jim just mentioned, I mean, we also do great, and you know, very lucky to do a lot of work with the tribe. I know we do a lot of work at Western Carolina. I mean, between those are, are big pieces of our client base. We work out here all the time. We also have the, the regional brush too of, we got an office in South Carolina, one in Jefferson. So we're going to hit our local market, which is all of Western North Carolina. I mean, local is within an hour, let's be honest. That's, that's Western North Carolina. And then, but I also feel like we have a regional net of the, the two-hour cusp, even into East Tennessee, we're doing work there as well. So you're, I feel like you're going to see, one, they got to be pre-qualified to work on one of our sites. So we're not going to put anybody on their jobs that aren't qualified and able to do the work, period. And then with that, we're going to bring parity, so we're going to bring multiple trades to bid the job. That's going to help drive that number down. So at the SD level, and Jim can chime into it more than me, it, it was a great problem to have, that between the documents being, being good for an SD set of documents, what I mean by that is there's more detail on and enough, enough information to where subs can price it relatively accurately. Take that with a grain of salt, but I mean, they at least felt good enough about it to put a budget on it. So like Jim said, we had, what, 70 folks?
Seventy, we solicited about 49 responding.
So that's actually very good for an SD budget. A lot of times at schematic, we do that all in-house. It doesn't even go outside of the office. We, we do enough schools, we have a pretty good gauge. But we did send it out, we did get great coverage, I feel like great coverage, and some good local partners. I mean, some is local, is inside this county, not many, you know, but there are some big enough to do this job. All of them will be qualified, done work with us, and able to do this job, that show up to do the work. Hope that answers your question. Long-winded, but.
Anything else? Is there anything we didn't answer for y'all?
Just on the gym, did you say you, this estimate counts a 700 seat? Gym, 750.
That was actually one of the few items for additional cost savings we suggested. Mark shot that down pretty quick. This is something you couldn't tolerate, you know? But you guys have, you know that more than I do. I can tell you how much it's worth. You guys have to value that, you know, what's the value? That one was dead on the ride.
And, and, and on the field, is that just a lined field or baseball field, football field? What is that field?
Is soccer field size?
Yeah, it is a full, a full soccer-sized field. Right now, in the scope is a grass field. And it would be surrounded by additional grass. There'll be some sidewalks that get out there to the field, that's required for accessibility. We can continue to evaluate and study the parking, amount of parking that we have. We talked in the discussions about the savings options, putting an alternate to sod that field. Sometimes we do that because of the time of year or the amount of time we have to get grass to establish before kids are going to be playing on it. But right now, what's in the, in the cost as we move into design development is grass. Seated field regulation, soccer size that would allow you to do really soccer or football on it.
The alternates for what? You did talk about the truck.
Anything else? I think for now, what is it that, that you need from this group? Were you going to say something? Did I get my eye off? I'm sorry. What is it that you need from, from us, from this group tonight?
I think we would love some final direction on really what we've presented to you, our decisions for your board to make. I think we've all been having conversations around these, and so at this point, you're very familiar with the working list of recommendations that we've made. I think it is in everybody's sort of best interest for us to get an, kind of an official nod that this is, these are the decisions that we intend to make with the, the budget report as it stands, with those recommended savings, and then sort of a little bit of an official say yes to go to the next design phase, which is design development. We want to move at the pace that y'all are comfortable with, with a project that you're comfortable with, that we feel good about recommending, that we think you can afford in the budget that you have.
Could we do a, so I, I think this list of VE's we've come through and went through, maybe going to that next level of like fit and finish type of budgeting? Can we look at that and see if there's some VE's in that department as well that we can maybe look at? Because it's still, to me, it still is a very, looks like a super nice school and everything. I, I wonder if there's still areas we can trim a little bit more there?
I think there, there will be. The best way for us to find those is to continue to develop the project with this framework that we make decisions on at the end of SD. We don't yet have enough detailed information developed on interior finishes, for example. So we're making some broad generalizations. The next phase will allow us to get a lot more granular and a lot more specific about those decisions. And with Vanoy's guidance, even along the way, before we get to a, an estimating stage for design development, we can start to vet some of those material choices. The same with the exterior. What you saw in these renderings that were in here, like even where the brick is, that's a pre-cast finish that is, that looks like brick on the outside. So we have built in some, some opportunities in the pre-cast design to allow for some variety in how the building looks on the exterior. So those light areas would be the, a pre-cast finish. The colored would be potentially painted to pick up on the Swain kind of maroon color. And then still some opportunities for brick finish on the pre-cast there. So there is still some room and some flexibility to, to continue to reduce the, the level of, of what we do on the pre-cast as interior finishes, same thing. Some of the smaller decisions we make about light fixtures and other components to the building that have not yet been developed, so it's hard to quantify those or to compare various choices. But I think in the design development phase, we'll be continuing to do that as well, to try to continue to hone in on it and to hit the target where it needs to be.
Have you had this experience before, like where you're within a million in this stage and feel comfortable that we can still get down in the next stage or the next stage to that number?
Yeah. Because I think the 32 pages of estimates you've got are going to turn into how many pages of detailed information?
24.
Double that. We'll have 60 pages of data to comb through. We'll have two estimators. We will have, be continuing to vet smaller decisions along the way, flooring options, lighting fixture packages, things like that, so that we, those are.
So you've played this game before in other areas?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done this. We've done it this way a good number of times, for sure.
On, on your estimate, the inside, the interior walls, are they mostly drywall or they part chair rail or anything like that, or?
Some will be pre-cast, which is super durable. Some will be drywall. Some will be other efficient, like for example, in the locker rooms, you want CD walls because of the water's in there. So it really depends on where, where it is and what's happening structurally.
I think the Mitchell Middle School, which y'all have seen and have experience with, a lot of those pre-cast walls were furred out with, with sheet rock, largely because we got to put power and data and all those things, and it's very challenging to do that in pre-cast. We wouldn't do that inside the gym, for example, for out with sheet rock. We would use probably the pre-cast finish in the gym, which is far more durable for that application. So we would go sort of space by space and area by area to make a final determination, but.
Stairwells, they work lovely pre-cast. Not all of them, but back house stuff.
Do you think like with the cost of work, it's sitting at 47 million, if that's at our comfort zone is 5%, 6% below that, so something in the 42, 43 million, is that, do you think that's too, that's too ambitious, that's too big of a stretch? Or is it realistic that that can be achieved? And I'm, I'm asking that just based on, you know, past experience.
That's a good question. That's one of my.
It's a loaded question.
Ambitious, it was a good word.
Yeah.
Impossible, no. Ambitious, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think it, what we have tried to do in schematic design is to offer real quantifiable savings without requiring sacrifice of what you need in your building. So we have not said we need to cut classrooms, for example, or reduce the size of the gym or eliminate the health clinic, right? Those are a bridge too far from a, this is what Swain Middle School needs to have in it. And I think at some point, we're going to reach a place where if that's the target, and I'm not saying that that, the target that you suggested is the, is the place, but at some point, we're going to cross a threshold that may be intolerable in terms of the choices and the decisions that you as a board need to make, that will start to compromise the programmatic amenities in your building that will serve the students and teachers in your district. And that's where we've tried to not cross that step at this stage, because we did capture a tremendous amount of savings without having to do that. And to be able to protect the program of the building going into the next phase of construction. And so I think there's always a way to hit that target, but it may come with sacrifice that is going to weigh heavily on this board and certainly would weigh heavily on us as a design team in terms of what we've heard from your stakeholders about what's the best thing for this new middle school.
I think if you look, go back to your question a couple minutes ago, Casey, if you look at the big VE's, structural pre-cast for the building and a different AC system, I think you're deciding that tonight. I mean, that's going to be really hard to go back here. But there's going to be, to your point, finishes, light fixtures, flooring, ceiling, those are going to continue to evolve and can continue to evolve as the design progresses. those are going to continue to evolve and can continue to evolve as the design progresses.
Anything else? So are you comfortable, that's a bad word, I don't know. Are you prepared, how's that? To, to give Vanoy and LS3P the head nod to keep moving forward at this point? Or is that something that you want to have a conversation about?
I think it'd be good for, for our little group to have a powwow about that and just, just talk it over and make sure we're good. That can happen quickly. I mean, I don't, I don't think we need more than a day or two to give them direction on that.
So by the end of the week, perhaps?
That's fair.
Because Emily will say the longer we wait, the more difficult it becomes, right?
That's, that's a good point. End of the week is, is fine, understandable. We want you to be comfortable with the decision. But yeah, I mean ultimately, if we're still targeting next fall, there's still pricing exercises, our teams are mentally bound, you know, work for rising. So there's all that parts and pieces. Sorry, I'm scared of you guys.
No, I'm okay. We pared this down internally, right? Like me and Mitch have been in some of these conversations. RL, Cody, Lisa haven't got to. I mean, I think we owe it to ourselves to, to roundtable that a little bit more before we make a commitment.
Understood.
Okay. Then we'll be back with you with a more definitive conversation towards the end of this week.
Very good.
Good deal.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you. I don't know what she's talking about. Look at something. You're laying in bed, huh? Understand that. I believe I like all these. I just feel like I'm a mile away from you right now. I like to wait, wait before.
We're going to start with the next part of our meeting in just a few minutes. Give us just a second to get our, our width about us, okay? And then we'll get on with it. Thank you. Yes.
Five oh seven, we'll begin our regular meeting. But we'll start with our best and then some recognitions.
I need to start with a, a word of apology to all of the students and your families who are here for our best and then some. We're still going to call your names out. We're still going to have everyone come up, just like we always do. But there's one piece that we don't have tonight, and I will personally bring it to you this week. And that's your certificate, your award. Just didn't get those printed this week. So here's what we'll do. We'll bring you your certificate, and I will do my best to bring you something from McNoddies. No, I won't. I'll bring you a water bottle or something that is suitable for your age and perhaps what your, what your, your likes are, okay? So please forgive us for that. This is the first time that we have had our best and then some without Toby Burl. And usually, I just say Toby fix it. Have you done? Well, this time he wasn't there to say fix it. So it didn't get fixed. Forgive us, please. We'll do better in the month of November, I promise. So to get started, I believe we have a young lady named Maggie Schuler. Maggie, are you here? Maggie? You might have to bring your grandpa with you or something. Ms. Stewart, would you come up to the front? And if Maggie wants to come, that's fine. And if not, you just talked about Maggie. We don't want Maggie to be upset.
She's, she's, she's completely okay. We're doing what I don't think.
I would like for you to be behind the microphone because you tend to be self-spoken. At least that's what your body language says.
Yeah, that's probably true. All right, so today I want to take a moment to recognize someone very special in my classroom. This little girl has truly stepped up to the plate this year, Maggie Schuler. Maggie was in my classroom last year, so she already knew our rules, routines, and expectations. But what really makes Maggie stand out is the way she goes above and beyond every single day. Maggie doesn't just follow the rules, she sets examples for others. Whether it's helping a friend find the right materials, straightening up the classroom without being asked, or volunteering for any job that needs to be done, she's always willing to lend a hand. Her kindness, leadership, and willingness to step in whenever someone needs help makes our classroom a better, happier place. Our best and then some, Maggie Schuler.
That's how my wife speaks, Lisa? Thank you, Maggie. And we have someone named Baker here. Baker, do you play for Tampa Bay?
Hi, everybody. My name is Whitney Davis. I teach kindergarten at East Elementary. Baker McMahon is a kindergarten student in my classroom. Baker came to kindergarten not only academically prepared, but also, but socially and emotionally prepared as well. Baker is an immediate friend to everyone that she meets. She's a very good communicator, and she knows how to listen to others. She includes others in situations where they might be otherwise excluded. Baker loves to help both students and teachers. She loves to be involved, and she is quickly learning to how, how to be a leader among her peers. Baker genuinely loves to be at school, and that is apparent throughout her entire day. She is smart, funny, creative, and a hard worker, but above all else, she is kind. I am very proud of her, and I'm happy that she's part of our classroom family. Baker McMahon.
I think that Baker's grandfather's name, Chuck McMahon, not Chuck Norris, right?
Who Chuck Norris is a medium of.
It was. And you'll, you'll never let me forget that either. That's good. Kiara Davis. Are you here, Kiara? That's all right. Lexi Carroll, I know that you're here, Ms. Sutt.
So Ms. Bennett nominated her, and then I had to follow up with that. Ms. Bennett was not able to be here tonight. Ms. Bennett did say, I have known Lexi since she was in second grade. I taught her younger brother Leo, who is here tonight. He was in kindergarten. She would always come over daily and check to make sure he was having a good start to the day. Lexi has grown so much over these past years. She has learned to self-regulate and seek help when needed. She is very empathetic and always willing to check on students that seem down or worried. Lexi is a joy to have in class, and she works so hard to bring her best self to school every day. Then I said, Lexi has worked hard on regulating her emotions for a long time. We have worked and practiced breathing in and out and walking away from something, finding a trusted adult for a long time. Does she use these practices still? Yes, she does. And last year, at the end of the year, she witnessed somebody else who was angry and having a hard time. And she reached out to that student and said, let me show you what I've learned and what we want. She is an example of being a friend even when others are not so nice. She is an example of treating other people the way she would want to be treated. And we are so proud of how far she has come and for all the things she will accomplish. She is a beautiful example of our best and then some. You get, you get what I said. I guess I stand here for my next one?
Yes, ma'am. I believe the first name is Zoe, I'm afraid you tried the last one.
Oh, me too. I always, I'm always scared. Wizenhour?
Yes.
Wizenhour? Thank you. I really...
She tried to teach me tricks to say it, and I just can't remember. I have the pleasure of watching Zoe. This one's from me, by the way. Zoe grows since second grade. She has blossomed into such a compassionate and caring young person. She genuinely cares about the people around her, and she shows empathy in everything she does. Zoe has twice been present. We had a medical emergency at school, and this person was a dear friend of hers. While witnessing something like that is difficult at any age, she remained calm. She quickly got help, and she continued to check on her friend afterward. Her calmness and compassion bring comfort to everyone around her in challenging moments. I don't know what profession she will one day pursue, but I'm confident that whatever path she chooses, she will pour her heart and soul into it, and she will serve others with great care and great compassion. She is truly a wonderful person and a shining example of our best and then some. I'll put that behind me, sorry.
From Swain Middle School, Noah, are you here?
All right, I've got Noah Dixon with me. We have had the privilege of having Noah with us almost three years, eighth grader this year. And we can, at Swain Middle School, I can truly say that we have enjoyed him being with us these last three years. Noah excels in the classroom, especially this year, and continues to show growth daily. When he misses a day, he is always asking what he's missed and, and completes that work and turns it in usually within the next day. He not only excels in the classroom, and I would say this is probably one of the most important things, he's always polite and respectful. When asked if anyone would like to volunteer in, in the announcements at the maroon meeting or in the classroom, Noah always volunteers to go forth and, and represent himself in front of the whole school. We are very, very proud to present Noah with our best and then some award because we feel that he embodies that each and every day. Noah Dixon.
And from Swain County High School, Ms. Lily Jones. Mr. Stevenson's going to brag.
All right, I'm stepping in for Mr. Alec. He gave me a few words to say. Says Lily is a model of dependability, kindness. She works hard, helps others without hesitation, consistently exceeds expectations in the classroom. Other teachers describe her as reliable, hardworking, always ready to lend a hand. She gives a hundred percent. She is a shining example of giving her best and then some. Proud to present our best and then some award to Lily Jones.
Can we give it up one more time for all of our best and then some? Thank you, teachers, for, for, what's the word I'm using? Suggesting them and also for parents for being, being here tonight. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want to, or you can use the next two or three minutes to make your way outside. It's up to you. Thank you.
Nobody ever wants to stay and listen to us, you know? Dang that live stream. So nobody ever wants to stay and listen to us. So dang that live stream. Dang that livestream. So nobody ever wants to stay and listen to us. So dang that livestream. So we got last middle in the academy, no, last high school academy.
My buddy's going to church.
Yes.
Pick him up every Sunday. Baseball. See, I told you. Everybody, everybody.
Alright, we'll give a pledge and a prayer before we call the meeting in order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be in this setting. Once again, we thank you for these folks that have joined us. We thank you for our school system as a whole, our whole district. Lord, we thank you most of all for our kiddos. Lord, what an encouragement, what a blessing they are in our lives. And Lord, we just thank you that this is our opportunity to give back. Lord, we hope that we do it in honor of you and, Lord, in your eyes and for your will for our school system and every decision that we make, every situation that arises that we have. Be with us just throughout this meeting, that we could be an encouragement. And, Lord, that we would do things again to honor you. We do love you. We thank you for loving us. We ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Bow to him. Call the meeting to order. First item is the approval of the agenda.
Nothing extra, as far as I know.
Motion to approve.
Just a sec. Action C, are we going to be waiting on that?
No, sir. I think there has been a request for us to have some level of conversation about that, and Mr. Jones is here to do that, unless you would, unless you all want to do table that.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that was something different. Okay, that's fine. So we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Second part is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with removal and potentially tabling item number eight?
Motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, brush your hands. Pass your hands. And so that takes us, do we have any public comment out there?
Eric, would you step out and see if anyone signed up for public comment? Tyler says no, but I'm crushing. No public comments, sir.
Do we have any need for a close session? I don't see that we need to.
Thought we needed to, but maybe not for.
Yeah, I think we can do that at a different time.
I don't have a need for close session unless you all do.
I don't, I, Mr. Carson didn't say anything about his need to, and I think he's out there on the phone.
What about the action C?
We're going to have discussion on that in just a minute. That's what Mr. Sturman was talking about. Okay, with no need for a close session, we'll go ahead and go to discussion.
We have, let me see, personnel is already included, yes? And that would be our next, our next discussion point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we need to have any discussion about item, about item eight from the consent and officially table that? Or do we just leave that like it is?
If we can, because I think the motion was without that, we can vote on it. Let's go ahead and do that. We'll vote on the consent agenda, table item eight.
Okay. Okay, so that's tabled then?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I don't get ahead of myself.
Yes, that's, that's, that was my understanding.
Okay. Give you some information about the land transaction. As I said a little while ago before some of the folks got here, and just to make sure that everyone understands, our surveyors in the process of putting the finishing touches onto the plat of Black Hills property. Because of the stipulations that the owners put in place, it's going to be just a little bit short of two and a half acres. But there has been an addition of a side piece. It's a little triangle piece that is actually being given to the school system at no cost. So that will bring the total above two and a half acres. There's also been some discussion with our surveyors about a little rectangle section that's up at the very top that seems to have gotten lost in all of the shifting of property over the past several years. And so they are including that in, and our lawyer is putting together a deed for us to ensure that that piece of property, which we have all assumed was ours, actually comes together with this, okay? I don't want to fall into any more assumptions about any property up there. I intend to have a plat for you at the next meeting, and we will need to look at when a good closing date is for that property. Everything is in order from there, okay? We have a school bus update. There has been some question about where we are with drivers, where we are with routes. I'll tell you that we've tried, we, I have stood back and tried to support Mr. Jones in the bus garage, Tessa specifically, in making sure that we have all of our routes covered every single day. There are some things that we've tried that have worked well. There are some things that we've tried that have kind of, for lack of a better phrase, kind of blown up in our face a little bit.
Love the commercial.
Yeah.
It's great.
The commercial might be the best thing that's happened with buses this year.
That was awesome.
Okay, so I appreciate your, your work on that. Dennis, would you please come and give us your suggestions and your ideas and take it as far as you want to take it tonight, and give me to ask questions?
Yes, sir. The first one is the bus route management procedure. I think y'all got that in your package there. Brief synopsis is basically, we spend a lot of time, and these people can attest to all the emails they get throughout the day of begging for bus drivers, and it eats at our time. It eats at Tessa's time and gives her a little time to do anything else. And it's come to a point now where we're just, we're beating down the same people over and over again. So I would like to do a thing where we send an email in the morning. By 11:30, whoever route does not get filled, a mass communication goes out to the community and says, "These buses will not be running." I don't imagine it'd be more than two or three buses a day. However, that doesn't mean we're going to stop recruiting and finding bus drivers. But to avoid that consumption of time trying to find drivers, I think that's one of the better options for us to move forward with. I've got three people now that are lined up to take the class. Two will probably pick up permanent routes, but that will happen, and it takes about three months to get your license done. They're scheduled in, two are scheduled, the 20th, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, and the next one's scheduled the 3rd to the 5th of November. So you're looking, is that December, January, before they actually get a bus license? By the time they go through all the training and everything.
Dennis, how many students would that impact if we had to cancel?
If you're looking at two or three buses, you're looking at three buses, probably around 90 kids. If you figure we max out a bus, it's about 30 kids to a bus, and most of our buses are maxed right now because we trimmed down all the routes to get as few buses as possible. And that's what we did. We tried to combine some more routes, and it worked good for a couple days. And then Friday came, and it just, I mean, they couldn't, everybody sat down. It was unsafe for the bus. And, you know, I appreciate Brian Thomas for taking on that task and trying to make that happen, but it just became too much. I also sat down with the two Alarca drivers to see how can we combine those? When you start putting kids on there, you got more kids than you got seats. So it's unsafe to do that and put them in that position, so.
Will there be any likes, this is the first one that we're going to eliminate, or these are the days? Is there any way to kind of make it consistent like that, or is it going to be kind of like 8:30?
It'll be who doesn't pick up and put up a bus and get picked up. Because you have bus drivers that prefer certain buses. They know the route, they're comfortable on the bus, and they don't want to drive. Because you've done things sometimes where somebody goes, "Well, I'll drive if I can drive this." So then you start making phone calls. "Okay, Lisa, can you drive 353?" Because so-and-so wants 124, and they can drive 124. I get somebody to drive 255. That stuff happens as well to get bus drivers on the bus. And so it's, you can't tell who or what's going to be open that day. 124 is probably the most, is the one that's always open in the afternoon. And then Tessa ends up driving it by the time the day's over with. It takes more time from her job because she's out driving that bus, so.
And this affects kids of any, from any school, right?
Yes, they're, all the schools are covered, so. On the very, is it this one here? Yeah, on the very back, those are route details. Those are the most common buses that we don't have drivers for. Now then, 306 may change as sports come doing in. That'll, that'll lead you some issues too, as coaches start getting relieved from cross-country, from other athletics. They'll pick up the routes as well.
Now, if you say if we cut routes, what do we do with those children? How do they get home?
We would maintain something at the school to keep eyes on them kids until their parents come and got them. That would be the next thing, is to have a conversation with the principals about holding teachers afterwards to monitor kids until parents come and got them.
So those parents may not be notified until that day it happens, right?
Exactly. And I think we, I think we put a notice out, like I said, these five buses are the most common. So as a reminder, before we advertise that, so as a parent, you're aware that these are one of my five buses, so I pay attention to what's going on that day when the communication comes out.
And then what does that look like for some, I hate to ask, but like for the elementary schools? Like how long can kids stay there, and then at what point, you know, is that, does it mess at all with after-school? And I know that's really separate, but you're going to have kids that aren't. What's that going to look like?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's, I want to use the right word because I'm in public, so. It's going to be tough for a little while until we get more bus drivers.
Is there any, have we gone down the road of incentives or anything like that?
That's the other thing I proposed, is a, is a bigger incentive for bus drivers. $200 a month if you're, if you're there meeting your route and doing what you're supposed to do. Because some of the things we fight with this too is that a bus driver will not drive their route in the afternoon to drive a white bus because he gets paid more money driving a white bus in that short amount of time.
It's almost always afternoon.
Other things play a factor to that too. They have kids that are playing, so it's convenient for them to drive that bus and go. So if I can do a incentive plan that incentivizes, you know, if you miss one route, and I mean, one route is the morning route or the afternoon route, that's a route, then you automatically lose 30 bucks off the top of your bonus. And then it dramatically goes down from there if you miss more days and whatnot, so.
Yeah, I think we should incentivize too. Something to look at is paying our coaches when they're behind the wheel driving the bus, and not make it just a, oh, well, you're coaching the team, so that's part of your coaching pay. You've got to, you've got to drive them. Because number one, we've got a lot of coaches that don't have CDLs. Number two, we have a lot of coaches that may, or not a lot of coaches. We have several coaches that have CDLs, but still don't drive their team, and we pay a driver to drive that white bus. So I think it's something, I think it's unfair at this stage in the game, in the bus driver situation, to say that that's incidental to their coaching pay to drive their team back and forth to the event. So I think that's something that we can look into as well.
I would suggest that we also, and I don't know where, we've been talking about this, and Tommy, I don't know where we are with our ability to do this, but if we're, not, not because we would look at incentivizing coaches that way, okay? But when our, when a certain set of our employees get on a bus and drive in the afternoon, they're getting overtime, okay? We have teachers that get on the bus, and they can accomplish overtime because they're salary employees. So they're actually driving the bus for less than the other group.
Can we fix that?
We're working on it. Yes. There's a lot of discussions going on, you know? I don't like to bring stuff to you until I got a 90% solution. And again, I'm a guy that's open. This is what I've come up with to put a Band-Aid for a little while to relieve some stress on the bus garage so they can work on other things. You know, Tessa's time is taken away from Tim's, which allows us to put information in, which hopefully can improve our routes. So maybe the computer's seeing something that we're not, and so it does eliminate a bus. That's one less bus we got. But she's so time-consuming, and it's ridiculous, the amount of emails, the constant phone calls, and then, okay, so-and-so, we haven't heard from them, so let's call them. It's just this ongoing thing every day. And so, like I said, the goal is not, this is not a permanent solution. It's kind of a Band-Aid until we get more drivers and get what we need to do. And, you know, incentive programs, looking at paying, you know, do I find a way that I can, not necessarily pay a teacher more, but allow them the same amount of pay as a person who's getting paid time and a half because they're an hourly employee. And that's what I talk with Mr. Gill's about. We beat it around quite, we beat it around a few times now. And how, what does that look like? How can we be, how can we have a fair pay scale that everybody's allowed to do certain things to get that amount of money? Also looking at the current pay, because I think our pay is, we've got a big block of like 10 years, where they make the same amount of money for 10 years. I think that's kind of ridiculous. I think we need to trim that down. But again, we're looking at that, what's the money look like? Where's the money come from to do that and all those different things, so.
Is that why you feel like, if, like if you were to ask bus drivers, is that the biggest barrier? Like, we reach out to them and we say, "What do you see?"
If you want to be honest, kids is a big barrier for, for bus drivers. It's, it's interesting to see some film on buses and the way the kids behave. You know, a bus driver wants to be focused. Nobody goes, "Well, get monitors." Well, then, that's somebody else you got to pay to be on the bus, and so where does that money come from? The snack bags have become an issue for some of the drivers. So that, that becomes, how do we, how do we work that in? How do we keep the money coming in from the snack bags, but yet not have a bunch of spilt milk on the back of the bus? And then some just, it's scary to drive o dark 30 in the morning where you can't see very well, and, you know, you don't want to run a kid over. So that, that's a concern for some of them as well, so. Just a thought, the fear of driving, for lack of better terms. Those are probably your biggest three.
So I'm a little bit concerned about cutting those routes and keeping kids at school. If we got, what's the plan for that? Is there somebody going to be at each school to watch?
Yeah, so that would be the next step, is to have a conversation with principals. Looks like this is what's going to happen. This is the buses we're looking at. What's the plan to put in place to cover these kids while they're here until their parents come get them? Again, I get the thing of if you guys are yay or nay today, is communication to the public. This is what's happening. This is what's going on. And I guess we've kind of hidden it from them as well. I don't think they're truly aware of what the impact is in the organization from what we're doing, from having to get bus drivers. I know there's probably a lot of people out there that could come out and drive a bus, and maybe that'll encourage them to then come out and drive a bus. I don't know. But yes, that's a conversation with principals to what does that plan look like at their schools to monitor kids?
I'm afraid we're going to trade one crisis for another, right? I mean, we, we don't have a bus driver, but then the kids, say it's West Elementary. The staff there's not going to get any more, they're not going to get any more notice that they have to stay late and keep kids. How do we know we're going to be able to keep?
If, if we're doing, if we're going to go this route, I think it has to be your schedule is a weekly schedule. So you three will be here next week. You three will be there the following week. So they know ahead of time, "This is my week to cover." If it don't happen, great, I don't got to cover anything. If it does happen, then I know it's my week to cover.
And what does that look like with compensation? Is that just built into what they're already doing? Or are they repaying more for them to do something they weren't expected to do?
It wouldn't be any more compensation.
So then they'd be staying afterwards? For nothing extra. I'm sorry.
I mean, no, no, well, no, so, so here's what I'm saying, and I, I know what I'm saying when I say this because morale is huge, and the morale of the people is big, and, and what that morale looks like. But I know that I am paid a salary, okay? I'm not paid eight hours a day. I'm paid to be here till the job's done. And sometimes I drop the ball, and I get that. But sometimes I think that's where we've lost sight as a teacher. We're paid a salary, and I don't want to work you any more than eight hours. I don't, I don't want that to be the case. But we're in a position now that we're, we're struggling to get our kids where they need to be, and how do we get them there? And teachers telling us, "No, I'm not going to drive a bus," or "No, I'm not going to do this," or people with licenses telling us, "They're not going to drive a bus." And I don't want this to be the solution, okay? I want this to be a Band-Aid to stop. How do we get more? I guess the bottom line is how do we get more drivers? What's the drive to get more drivers? But until that time can happen, how do we stop beating down the same people and working them into the ground by driving a bus over and over and over again? Cindy Thompson's prime example. She is the first on the list. Eric Stevenson's another one. She is the first on the list, Eric Stevenson's another one. They are giving up that valuable time from three o'clock when the kids are all gone, and now I can sit down and focus on my day and get things done, but they're jumping on a bus and they're driving a bus. You know, so it takes away from their, their time to get things done in their administrative roles and things of that nature.
I, I agree, I, I think that's what the, the market is clearly telling us, that we're missing the mark on compensation here. And it's, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go the, the Band-Aid approach, I think we should look at finding a way to change compensation. I, I'd feel much better about that than saying, hey, this bus X Y Z isn't gonna run today. I mean, that, I'm telling you, that's gonna blow up.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So what I hear you saying is that rather than take this route, pardon the pun, I didn't mean for that. That you would, you would prefer that we look at a different compensation package for the drivers?
Correct.
To incentivize more people to drive?
Yes.
Okay?
So I guess the next question is, do I have a window to work within, so I don't get crazy and, you know?
Yeah, I think that compensation needs to be wrong.
I think there's probably a couple different scenarios that I'm probably a little, little ignorant to, you know, like the overtime thing, or the, I probably need some information. But I'm just saying in general, if we have to spend a little more to get drivers, I, I think we do what we gotta do there.
All right.
TPI tops out the scale, it says you can't pay a driver any more than X. And that's the base rate. That would also be impacted by overtime rate for the people that are, but for teachers, one of the whole factor teachers is, all right, I'm a teacher's assistant, hour and a half for driving, if I'm a teacher, I make sixteen bucks. If I'm a, if I'm a teacher's assistant, I make twenty-two fifty, twenty-three dollars an hour driving a bus the same route.
Yeah.
And I'm not irrelevant to get to that. And there are some avenues to get to that, but the, the cans and the wheels and the house is something that was subject to great debate. Because if we change the rate, we have to have a reason to change the rate. We can, we can't just say, well, do this for certified staff, just because we're certified staff. We have to say something about a skills-based thing that will allow us to.
Like, can, can, can the answer to that be that, well, here's the rate you gave us, and we can't get any drivers?
Oh, we can raise the dollar. What I'm saying is, is that if we raise the dollar, like I said, we split the top, the top rate is twenty-seven dollars an hour.
Okay.
And we work backwards, reverse engineers, since these people do business loans, you're gonna pay them twenty-seven dollars an hour, and we go backwards.
Right.
First off, we have a pot of money that pays for our, pays for our bus drivers and our current thing that we have a hard time making for rent. That's the first piece. But the second piece of it is, if we say it's twenty-seven dollars an hour for that, and it's fifteen dollars an hour for them being, or sixty dollars an hour as teacher's assistant, their blended rate will be based, it will be somewhere in the middle of that, they'll base time and a half. So the time and a half will be very expensive for overtime. Now, that doesn't mean they'll do it, but we still have to be able to figure out a way to pay our drivers.
So to make it quicker here, Tommy likes to talk. Anyway, so no, we'll work on a budget and, and get it to you guys, and then see what that looks like, and then you can shoot me in the foot again, or tell me, yeah, that's great, and we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, look at the, I think we all looked at athletic piece too.
It's not my role, so don't put that on me. No, I think there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things we wanna do, but it's, again, where, where does that come from? You know, it's um, I know we're not a rich county, and, and I get that, so you try to, you know, pinch pennies wherever you can, and unfortunately, the people pay for that, and that's, that's frustrating sometimes, so. Yes, sir.
Did I understand you correctly? One of the deterrents of driving the bus is because of the behavior of the kids?
Yes, sir.
We can, we can, we can do something about that, I believe. I mean, if you get, if a bus driver turns you in for whatever the problem is, you get kicked off that bus, you lose your privilege to ride that bus. I mean, that's, that can be, that can happen.
That's the way it was when we all grew up.
Yes, and I think, you know, it's funny, I had this conversation with him in the day, cause he thought about what kinda kid he was growing up, and I said, okay, you know. But, but back in the day, but back in the day, he was, he was the, he was the exception. That, that behavior was the exception, now it's the norm. The well-behaved child is the exception.
Well, I mean, if you got kids, if you got children goofing off like they're, like I hear they're goofing off, and you start getting them off the bus, you're gonna eliminate some routes right there for them.
Yes, sir.
And then it's up to the parents.
And that, that might be, if, even if we did have to go the route of eliminating routes, to me, that'd be the ones that you cut first. Hey, you know, whatever, bus one twenty-three, you're always the most problematic behavioral route, so that's, you're gonna be the first one that gets cut, if we have to go that route.
Or you have.
I mean, hopefully we can avoid that, but I'm just saying.
And have kids off the bus that combining routes isn't quite as much of a safety issue, I don't know.
The, the one group of students that will be difficult to pull off of routes, pull off of buses, are students that come with an IEP identification, okay? And I'm not saying that they create more or less problems, but uh, that those, those, those create an additional set of expectations, okay? And we are at about, at least what I remember, twenty, what percent, twenty? Twenty-three percent of the students in Swain County are identified as, as exceptional right now, which is pretty high. Just, just remember that, okay? Do y'all have a, you have a copy, can you see a copy of the pay scale for that?
Is there a way, in, in addition to just years of service, can it be evaluated by, say, attendance, reliability?
Yes. Yeah, we could put together, we could put together an evaluation plan that's, that's based on objective standards and not subjective standards.
Okay.
I think we need to stay away from subjective. You know, I thinks.
Yeah.
Okay? But yeah, we can do that. I can have that ready for you by the end of the week. Okay? I can have all of this ready for you. Is there a number that, that you want us to cap out at?
Yeah, like a hundred bus drivers would be good.
Well, but how much would it cost to get a hundred bus drivers?
I, I usually don't know this, I'd like to see the overall budget, what we're spending on, you know, bus drivers in general, and, you know, what does a five percent increase look like to that, ten percent, et cetera, and, and maybe we make those decisions on a, a order of magnitude scale.
We can do that. We can do that.
And how many bus routes do we have total?
Twenty-two buses are on the, twenty-two buses are on the road.
Twenty-two bus route.
To my, to my memories, that pressure was eighteen, man.
It was twenty-two.
And usually like two or three were short a day.
Yeah, we, we can narrow it down to usually about two, maybe three a day.
And while it will get, it will get better whenever some of the sports begin to face out, but it's gonna get worse in the spring.
Yeah.
Because there are more coaches that are involved in the spring than in the fall.
Yeah.
Okay? There was another question, but I can remember what it is now. We'll have this, Millie, we can have this tomorrow at eight AM. No, I'm kidding. In a couple of days, we can have a draft, okay? We'll cut out some time for that. Fair enough? Started and then enjoy your day. And we'll also work on bus discipline, and Mr. Jones and the principals and I will present a discipline plan to the students ourselves personally, and help them understand that. But now, when it comes time to remove students from the bus, and I would hope that you'll back us up on that, because there will be some parents. You understand?
Oh, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, I think we're trying to send some mass communication out to parents to not just rely on.
We're, we're not gonna, we do word of mouth, and we're not gonna spring it on anybody.
There'll be a couple of things we can do leading up to that as well.
Fair enough?
Some training.
Okay.
Now, do we have like a, do we have like a trash drop-off before getting on the bus for the ones who are respectable with their snack bags? Or is that a source point of?
Well, I don't, I'm not gonna go into detail in snack bags, I don't understand all the rules like Michelle does, but I know it's, you're, you're not supposed to get their snack bags until at, at the end of the day.
Yeah.
The end of the school day. So if, if they stop teaching at two fifty-five, they're out the door, getting their bag, and they're on the bus. Cause there's not the time to really consume that meal before you get on the bus.
Yeah, cause my wife showed me the picture of what she cleaned up on her bus Friday, and it was, it was astonishing.
Yes.
I mean, it was.
Now, I have one bus driver that she's good, man, she's got them squared away, they don't, gives them their backpack, and then it doesn't, if it comes out, she's on them like, there you go, hobo on a ham sandwich. So it's um, again, it goes back to, you know, you got classroom management, sometimes bus management is a, is a thing as well, and, and you know, it's, it's getting tough for some of them though, cause she's, she's a hard-nosed one, but I watched video the day, she stopped three or four times just to get kids in line and get back on the road, so.
Part of the answer to that is, we can work on that. We have a plan that we're working on right now, and should be a place soon where students will actually be able to consume that before they get on the bus. That's the goal. But for every minute that they're consuming the meal, it's a minute that they're not getting instruction.
Yeah. I was thinking like, you know, your administration out there, you know, tell Suzie, you got your bag, if you're not gonna eat it, you go right there in that can before you get on the bus. You know, that communication piece, instead of just, okay, well, Suzie's getting on the bus, you know what I mean? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not wanting the kids to waste it, don't get me wrong, cause there's someone that's gonna take it on and eat every bit of it, and that's fine.
Well, now, one of the things that's happened to Mitch is that, that we're not just giving them to everybody, the kids actually request them.
Okay.
At this point, and they come also with dietary restrictions. You know, if someone needs gluten-free, then we provide that for them, which is one of the reasons we don't give them to them as they get off the bus.
Right.
And that would be another thing for the bus drivers to do, you know? So thi- this is a two-edged sword that we, that we work on.
Yes, sir. All right.
Okay? Any, any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for that conversation. We have NC Star plans, West Elementary's gonna come, and Lisa, are you presenting this one? Please and thank you.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you had a copy of what I'm getting ready to just hit on a little bit. I'm not gonna read every step that we're implementing, you all are educated people, and you can read what we are doing. A couple of things that we are wanting to hit on is that we have met growth the last two years prior to this past school year. We've been a C school, we are a C school this year, but we did not meet growth. And that kinda cut the wind out from all of us, I'm not gonna lie to you and blow sunshine up your nose. Hit us kinda hard because we've been working hard, and that was a hard pill to swallow, but we swallowed it, and we're moving on, and we're taking targeted deliberate steps to improve this. I met with my specials teachers and, this past week, and didn't get, you know, daggers thrown at me, but I'm going to pull them. We have three kindergarten classrooms, three first grade classrooms, and three fourth grade classrooms. So what that means in specials is two days, not really because of the way they're scheduled, but there's ample time in their schedule for them to push into a classroom and help. And all of those people come with an education degree of art, music, whatever, and so they can help us deliver those interventions to our kids that need them. We're also, since we did our plan, know that we're a targeted school for improvement, and that's because of our percentage of students with disabilities. We have consistently gone down in that area the past three years. Looking at those kids, you know, when you look at data and you look at percentages, it is a percentage, and it's not a kid. And I think Mr. Sale gets met sometimes at me, cause I go, but this kid, this kid right here, he should, and that's, that's who we are. We're in the business of taking that percentage and moving it, but I'm also with that kid tonight. That kid tonight, that's made growth that you're never gonna see on a sheet of paper. She's never gonna be, you know, in that ninetieth percentile. That's what you've got to remember, is every kid comes with something. In that percentage, there's a group of kids that are living with parents, grandparents, great-grandparents. They're kids that are showing up in those same clothes they've had on all week. They're kids that go to the share table and get three calzones and eat all three of them. They're shocked to death, and they're a little bitty, but they'll hold three calzones because they don't know. And then you've got those that'll throw it in the trash, or leave it on the bus. So you come, when you talk about percentages of all the things, and, and your job is to look at those percentages and hold me accountable. And my job is the business of kids. It's, my business is kids, and trying to make these kids grow the best they can, but I'm gonna love them while I'm doing it, and I know you all would too. But that's my passion, that's why I got into this, is to love kids and to help teachers. And I'm doing that the best I can, and we're still not meeting the mark, but we're still gonna do it, and we're still gonna do our best. We're looking at seven habits. We are, one of our things that, when we did our MRA this past year, was lowered lower in that students felt connected to an adult in the building. It was not a huge loss, but it was one that was enough of one for us that held us accountable, that we wanna make sure that we're connecting with kids. Our staff is now gonna be making phone calls home to parents, and we love it in the campus because it tracks that for us, and we can see that happening. We're also, we met with Patrice Brown this past week, and we are in the process.
Who's Patrice Brown?
Patrice Brown is our leader and me representative, she will be helping us to try to move forward to be a lighthouse school.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. One of the things I have charged my teachers with is common assessments, because if you've got a group of three people, me, Casey, and Lisa, we're, even though Lisa and I share the name, we're not gonna do things the same way. And so what we're wanting to do is teachers to build those common assessments, so that I can teach, you know, I can be charismatic, I can be whatever in the classroom, or I can be, I'm gonna do this just the way I know how to do it, the best I can, but when we assess, we're gonna assess the same way, so that when we sit down together in PLCs and MTSS, and we're looking at data, our common assessment's gonna be, what did we miss? As, when we planned together, what was the missing piece? What can we do better? What, because when we do check-ins, that is an indicator of our, to our teachers, of what did I, if everybody missed number sixteen, it's a teacher problem, not a kid problem. So we know that, and that's why we love to do those, and we will do those. But we're holding ourselves accountable to that common assessment. It was funny this week, just sudden, Kendra and I were, she was doing a walkthrough, and I was doing a full-blown observation, and we came back and, I didn't know where she was going to, and we came back and our notepads were laying there, and we had drawn the same thing. And we were like, and the teachers were, it was a little bit different on each page, but the teachers were in the same grade level, and they were doing the same thing, and we didn't even know, but it was kinda, yay, they're doing the right thing, they're doing what we asked them to do. It's not always the case, so we were happy. We want to work smarter, because we've been working hard. So we're pulling our data resources, we're using McKinsey Meadows, she is our school psychologist, we're pulling her in for conversations on interventions. school psychologist, we're pulling her in for conversations on interventions. We're, we're having, trying to have real conversations and hold ourselves accountable in ways that maybe we haven't before, and they're hard conversations. When I look at my EC students, I believe students can make growth, I believe even those kids can, what we're seeing. And I brought data, but it was just another piece of data to throw at you, and it's here if you want it, but I'm kinda holding back on it. And it's kind of across the board. When we come back from summer, our kids go backwards about a hundred points. And our EC kids, that's a lot to ask them to catch up. They eventually do, but guess what? Then the next summer, they're going back a hundred, and they're never really getting their ground underneath them. They're trying and they work hard, and they're putting a lot of work into it, but, um, you know, unfortunately, that's been an area that we've just continued to struggle with the past three years. But we are putting people in classrooms to help that we haven't put in the past three years, and I hope that's what makes the difference this year, is just our concentrated effort on that, and we are holding our teachers accountable because we feel like core, our core is the issue, is core across the, the whole grade levels and school. And we're going in more classes and being in there and making sure they're, they're teaching the content that they should. Do y'all have any questions about, um, the areas that she gave you that we're hitting? I hope I address those in my running around. We're gonna have more communication with parents. I think our activities at school, our, our parents come, that's never been an issue. Our parents are involved. Our equipment in the back we put in this past summer that, I don't know if you should come out and look, it's like when you go to Franklin, that big, and I think Jackson County has one that covers the playground, that was a thirty thousand dollar piece of shade tree over our playground in the back, and, and our parents did that.
You know, she's talking about, it's one of those big tarp things.
Tarp and chain.
That tornado can't blow away.
Yeah. It's nice. And the kids love it, they play hard under there, they're still sweating, but it's a, it's a nice shade for them, and we're hoping that we'll do that to the front with some more fundraising, but that'll be another year. We don't have enough money for that yet. But our parents show up for us, and that's what we're thankful for.
Questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, I believe you're next.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Uh, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, a couple months ago, I try not to take sixty minutes of your time, but sixty, okay, all right. But I do appreciate it. I'm not gonna cover kind of the, um, the data that we kinda went over the last couple months, uh, about all the things that we did in our first year, uh, from the graduation rates to the transitional rates that we've had here. This is more of a conversation of kinda what we're doing this year to move forward. And so what we're trying to do with our, our, our population of kids, the traditional model of education has not been, um, successful for them. They've not shown success usually in a typical classroom, whether that be an attendance issue, a behavioral issue, or an academic issue. So what we've challenged our teachers to do is I meet with them every two weeks, and we're curriculum mapping our entire curriculum. So we're taking, uh, each one of our courses, um, they meet with me every two weeks, and we go through, okay, here are your North Carolina standards, this is the ones that you feel are most important, these are the ones that, um, you feel like we need to allocate some more time with. And then we take that curriculum and we filter it through their post-secondary goals. So what is the classroom kids wanting to do after high school? And so can we take what their desire is after high school and filter it through the lens of the standard? So can we take our mass standards and say, okay, how can you figure out bored foot in a, in a, in a tree, rather than just sitting down and saying, what's, what's, what's the, you know, Pythagorean theorem, or, and just giving them blank knowledge? And so what we're trying to do is we, I've got a, a process that I work through with my teachers, that we take the standards, we filter them through a post-secondary goals, um, more hands-on experiences and the community involvement experiences. So can we take that curriculum and teach it differently, or in a manner in which our students will see value? What I would like to see when I walk into their classroom is the, is, is can the kids answer the three questions? What are we learning? You know, so what do we learn? Why are we learning it? And how am I gonna use this? Those are the three questions. If you can get a kid to answer those three questions, they're learning. Most of the time, I think some of the struggles that our kids have found is they get taught knowledge, but no, no application of why I would ever use this. Any kid will wanna learn if they know it's, they're gonna use something in the future. They, you get them on YouTube video of putting an engine together, they're glued to it, or if it's something they see value in that they can use moving forward. So what we do with our, our curriculum mapping is, again, every two weeks, we meet with our teachers, we go through that process, I help them, I'm pretty good at, um, I'm very weird, I guess you'd say, eclectic, that's a better word, uh, eclectic. So I can help them pull different resources and knowledge, um, in, in different avenues to help our teachers support. Um, and so we're building our curriculum maps. The goal is within two years, we will have every course, core course that we offer mapped, so that it is no longer a, a thing that you are creating, it's a thing that you're adapting. So you have a resource tool bank, um, because within the program that I've kinda designed, you have video allocation of resources, you have written allocation of resources, you have, how do these relate to the 21st century skills, which is the portrait of a graduate that North Carolina has. So how can we filter that standard through all of those? Like Ms. Franklin, we're working with her, 'cause she's gonna teach biology next semester. How can we filter biology through the lens of cooking? You know, can you take cooking as a catalyst and teach catalyst? Can you teach chemical reactions? Can you do all that stuff and use more hands-on practical experiences for our students, which has been, then they have shown to be more successful in the classroom to gather their concepts. Still trying to do all the behavioral stuff, our things on Fridays are still great opportunities. One of the things that our students are lacking, uh, we find, is experiences. Our, our students, for example, we took them to Wendy's after, um, we went to Southwestern for Career Day, there was eight or nine kids that had never been to Wendy's before. Like, you know, you don't even think about that, just like, ah, you know, I just drive and stop by or whatever. So, but they don't have experiences, some of them, so we try to provide them those experiences so that they can make better choices in their future. Like, oh, there is something else out there, there's something else that I can do, whether it be, um, in the Southwestern trip this Friday, it was really, really cool, 'cause they, they had like three or four floors, and they went through food trucks to dental hygienists, to work with some of the, um, they got the helicopter where they brought it in, and then you could see the HVAC, and then they had, so it was really cool. But that's what we tried doing on Fridays, related to their content. So that's our goal, um, our two-year plan. Um, I think we've done a good job building positive relationships and community. Our kids feel safe, they feel secure, they feel supported. You know, most of them wanna remain there, so that's usually an indication that you're doing something that they feel there is value there, so. Any questions? Six minutes?
Four, not six.
Four.
Were you timing?
I was, yeah, I did look.
So that was six minutes? That was not four.
It was four.
If that was four, then I preached for ten minutes, ten minutes, and that's all.
The timing is, it was, I looked, I looked.
Six, seven. Four minutes underwater.
So, um, I think y'all have a printout of NC Star plans, so I kinda just broke it down for me to read, that's a little confusing to me, so. We, we basically settle on two goals, kind of aligning with what, um, the state kinda la, uh, maps out for us. So our first, we wanna focus on a behavior goal. School staff will communicate consistently, reinforce school-wide behaviors, expectations, so that students understand and meet these expectations, and staff provide positive behavioral supports. That is something that we are having conversations about and trying to find ways to implement. Elementary's a little more simpler with that than high school with the positive behavior stuff, so we're trying to find some ways to do that. And this also includes the implementation of any and all state, local, and school board policies. So, kinda the, the action steps that we're really, um, trying to focus on right now, implementation of consistent classroom procedures, um, with any of the, the policies, uh, that are in place. And I do have a, I have a teacher that actually, one of the cell phones being taken up and put in holders, I had a teacher create a charging station. So kids are pretty interested in plugging their phone in if they're on the desk to charge while they're in class, so they don't have them. But again, working on reinforcing positive behaviors, uh, some rewards and things like that to, to promote that, not just having punitive. And then using data to identify and address behavior trends, so looking at office referrals, what those referrals are for, um, what kinda stuff's going on, and what we can do to steer, steer that in a better direction. And progress monitoring for that, so monthly behavior data reviews, walkthrough checks, um, weekly care team meetings, uh, looking at discipline referrals and trends, um, and adjusting strategies if needed. And then by the end of the year, comparing the discipline data, uh, to the baseline to determine if we've achieved that goal. So that's our behavior goal. Academically, um, by systematically using school performance data, formative assessments, and classroom observation data, the schools strengthen instructional practice through target professional development, modeling, and data-driven, uh, decision-making. So I know, working really close with Ms. Almond, um, she's got some professional development that her and one of our English teachers are going to about, uh, how to teach reading, um, kind of like at the elementary kinda style of teaching, but for a secondary, um, group of students. So really trying to look at interventions and stuff that we can build on from there. Action steps, establish and communicate a department data cycle, uh, that includes regular formative assessments, uh, data analysis, instructional planning, and intervention adjustments. So right now, um, departments are meeting anywhere between two to three weeks, it has to be under a three-week window, so they get together, um, and we look through this information and dissect that. Conduct, conduct PLC meetings focused on reviewing formative assessment results, uh, reviewing best practices, and a plan for targeted instruction intervention. We just got check-ins back for English II, so we were able to identify where those students were struggling the most, um, and we are gonna get with our history department and work on how we can, uh, cross over that, um, standard from English into history, be able to work on that reading informational text and pulling that from there, um, to kinda bolster with that in the area that we're struggling most.
Tyler, does everyone understand what a check-in is? They, sometimes we use these phrases. Do you, do you understand what check-ins are?
It's kinda like a midterm, for lack of a better, yeah, it's like a midterm, middle of the year, see kinda, and it's based off of the, so the four classes that take EOCs at the high school, they can take that check-in, and it's based off of state-pooled sample questions and stuff like that, things that they potentially can see. So, and we'll, we'll use that to kinda help curb that where we're seeing the low spots.
Is that voluntary or mandatory for certain students?
It's mandatory. Like, so if we, if we select to do it, we assign it, and that's-
He can make it mandatory.
Yeah.
Voluntary, voluntary and disperate.
So utilizing classroom walkthrough and observation data to identify trends and provide targeted feedback, um, and align interventions and enrichment with the formative data, so any of the formative assessments that we're, we're conducting in class, you know, figuring out where those, what they're missing, what standards they're coming up short with, and what we can do to kinda curb back and circle and correct that. And then for students that are achieving above that, um, things that we can provide extension-wise to stretch a little further, um, so there's no getting stagnant and staying in the same place. So progress monitoring, uh, monthly walkthrough trend analysis, uh, coaching feedback, quarterly, um, leadership team review student performance data to determine professional development needs and intervention adjustments. And then, uh, by the end of the year, we'll evaluate, uh, teacher implementation data and student proficiency growth. So basically, we're looking for a ten percent jump in proficiency, um, based off of last year, and I think it was, off the top of my head, like forty-three percent proficiency. So, um, our goal is ten percent, moving up off of that.
You're using iXL?
Yep, we are piloting a program in math that we're using pretty heavy in Math I, it's, uh, iXL, um, that our teacher's begging me to make sure that we keep, because it offers, uh, pretty, pretty consistent, real-time data, feedback on where students are at, how they're performing, um, and then the accessibility at those intervention pieces to plug in for those missing links.
And I think I heard that there may be an interest at piloting that in ELA and-
There is a read, what's it called?
Well, we're gonna try that iXL.
Oh, reading? Okay.
Then we'll go then.
Perfect. We'll give it a go.
We'll try that first.
And so iXL is diagnostic and then descriptive. So it takes the student, determines where they are, and then it makes a sign that for them to work on according to their ability level, and pushes them forward from there.
So what's the difference between these periodic diagnostics and a check-in?
So diagnostic's probably gonna be a little more formative, so it's something that I can build off of, 'cause the frequency of it, so I can get a little bit quicker data and then reassess and circle back to correct. The check-in is more of a, you can use it formatively, but because of the distance, the gap between taking it, it's more of a summative to see, like, I've covered these seven standards, well, this is where they're at on these seven standards. Diagnostic, you can be a little more to standards, and then we can spiral that.
That's a little more granular. So do you, when you, 'cause we're talking about voluntary versus mandatory on the check-ins, what is your determination of, like, uh, of a mandatory check-in? Who are you, like, ha, what is your determination? How do you determine who's mandatory for a check-in?
Those, so basically, we, the mandatory for the check-in is those EC courses. So those, those courses that offer that check-in, so like right now, I think this week, we've got Math I.
So it's everybody, it's not student-specific, it's course?
Yeah, it's course-specific. So if you're in Math I, you're gonna take that Math I diagnostic. If you're in English II, you take the English II diagnostic.
All right. I was, I was worried about that, 'cause I was like, it should be mandatory for everybody.
It's mandatory for every student, so you can get, you can get a, a measurement comparison across the board.
Okay. I'm good, I was just, that's where I-
Well, those are good questions.
All right, thank you.
One difference I was getting, Corey, one difference between iXL and the check-in is iXL is adaptive, so it will start them at a certain level and then, based on what they answer, go up, or they're gonna give them a performance level. Whereas the check-in is more EOG-ish, EOC-ish, and it's like, do you know the standard or not?
The check-in is providing a study. And iXL, the purchase.
Yes, absolutely.
How compatible are those? 'Cause clearly, we're graded on a state standard.
We don't know yet.
I don't know.
That's a good question. A lot of people are using iXL, and a lot of people are using iReady as well, as I look around the state.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta also take into consideration that iXL, you've been using all your courses, um, your EOC check-ins, it's just EOC with stage two, Math I or three.
Right.
So your, your iXL can give you a more day-to-day operational understanding of where that kid is, and it's an adaptive. Your check-in is basically saying, if you were to take the EOC right now, this is the time.
Well, and it seems to be, it, it's interesting, because I know that looking at own-better diagnostics and stuff like that, that you can see good growth, you can see that they're understanding, they're doing all these things, but then they take the EOG and the scores are way lower. So it's like, well, some, somewhere, there's a disconnect between EOGs, EOCs, and these diagnostic tools. And I'm, that's just, I have to tell my part, I don't understand how that's happening, but I know it's not you guys, it's just a, a difference in the tools.
I thought you were talking with the level through the separate rooms, the tenants, and then we're back.
They're back, okay.
But do we, do we use those check-in, I mean, 'cause in theory, you should be able to, to project where you're gonna score, right? If I'm teaching Math I and I do three or four check-ins, and I'm consistently hitting, whatever, three out of five, that ought to be a pretty good indicator of where we're gonna score.
It should be.
And so I think that's, to echo Cody's question, like, is that what we're seeing? Is there, is it accurate predictor of where you're gonna score, or not so much?
High school-wise, to be honest, I don't know at this point. Just went through my first round of check-ins.
But speak to it from elementary.
Elementary, it, it, it can be, it's, my experience with that is it's fairly accurate to a sense, because if you're not on the same exact pacing guide as that check-in, that check-in could assess standards one through eight, and you've covered standards nine through twelve. So when you've taken it, it can be a complete wash. So we had to go back through and look at what standards were on that check-in that were covered and piece those together. And then it's fairly close, not anything exceptional, but-
Lisa, what's your experience?
I'm just pulling up my data, she's right. I'm not perfect.
Speak loud, because I'm deaf.
We take three check-ins a year. Beginning, mid, and end. And by the end of the year, you're, it's, it's not a summary of the year, it's like the last piece of concrete they add. And so it's not an accurate, you know, if you average all these, then it will be now. But I would say between, when we look at iReady and when we look at our check-ins, um, iReady is a better indicator of where they're gonna score on the EOG than the check-ins, because the check-ins are, the check-ins, what you're teaching that first semester, and what you're teaching that second semester, what you're teaching that third semester.
Got you.
So it's not an accurate indicator of how you're gonna perform on the end of your test, whereas iReady is more of an indicator, 'cause it's relative, and also, it's like Tyler was talking about iXL, it, it sort of gives a pathway for that kid, 'cause you see, it's the thrill of it, and then Lisa, and, well, invite an Oreo, sorry.
I've been there.
You say that when you get a score, there's, you know, there's a stretch curve, that if I might stretch a curve, it's a pretty good indicator, they're gonna be a four or five, more likely a four or five. And that stretch curve is hard to determine, it's, it's hard.
How quickly?
But it is a good indicator of at what the kids were lacking, so that you can reteach that, so that when they get to EOG, they're not missing that skill.
Tell you what, for this meeting, thank you, I don't wanna get off track, 'cause this, this is your NC Star plan, and we'll stick to that, and I apologize. We'll probably do another, I would like to learn more about these, uh, diagnostic analysis and how quick that you can see that this child is struggling, using, if iReady's such a good product of how they're gonna score, then how quickly can iReady identify the students- If iReady's such a good product of how they're going to score, then how quickly can iReady identify the students that are struggling? That's a topic for a different time. I don't want to get, take your time and we'll stay focused. But I, I would like to learn more about these diagnostic tools because I'm really...
That would hurt my heart.
Naive in some of those.
But yeah, I just to wrap, as far as the check-ins, I am interested to see kind of what that'll look like for us because we don't take three because we switch at the middle of the year. So it's kind of a real quick snapshot and then rolling into an EOC at the end of the semester. So I'll be interested to see how we can correlate that together.
Do y'all just have one, one check-in, Tyler? Is that all you can take?
Would more check-ins be helpful or just? No, and that's why we're, we're really making a push for like that formative assessment. So really trying to make sure that we are doing regular assessments to see where they're at performing with that standard so we can make adjustments as opposed to waiting for a summative assessment to see how good or bad things turn out.
So Tyler, when you're, and I know Cody that we probably should move on, but just bear with me just a second. When you're talking about formative assessment, I understand what that means. But when you're talking about formative assessment across a semester, which is really a year, we're not talking about an externally created formative assessment, we're talking about teacher-made.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's the great struggle of a high school. There is not the diagnostic tools and the assessment tools that you will find at the elementary in the middle that has been designed for the high school. I mean, finding iXL has been wonderful.
And you don't have, very, very, very rarely are you going to have a partner because I think I've got maybe two teachers that are teaching the same class. Everybody else has got different stuff, so that you don't have that kind of commonality to sit down and say, hey, what's going on in your Math 1 class with this, this, this? Because you're the only teacher teaching Math 1. So trying to use that to bolster that.
We'll schedule a work session for that, okay? And I believe that it would be good for us to do that between, if you can get it in your schedules, between now and the November meeting because in November's when we, we make our final approvals for NC Star plans. Okay? And you all are supposed to have the opportunity to look at them and say, I want to know more, I haven't thought about. All right? That's, that's one of your own duties too. And I would love to have your interest, love it. Okay? Any more questions for, for Tyler?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Some of the things that we have to accomplish in, in the next month center around the fact that we have a couple of schools that have been identified as low-performing. I really hate that, but we just have to live in that reality. And so there has to be public comment. What we're going to do is we're going to post executive summaries for each of East and also the middle school. And we're also going to post the executive summary for the entire district. And then the NC Star plans for the public to look at and make suggestions or ask questions. And then we're supposed to have a public, a public meeting here for people to make comments if they want to. And that has to be at the next board meeting. We have to send all of this in November 30th, okay? So may I suggest that we, that we plan for probably, and I hate to do this, but at least 20 minutes. I don't know if anybody will come or not. They may or they may not. And then if people want to come and talk to us about that, we just need to be prepared. And I'll have all of our staff here to make sure that we're ready for that. Is that fair enough?
And when you say public comment, is it the same restrictions as public comment because we don't?
It's a public hearing. It's a public hearing. And so they can come and, and Cody, we're going to need to look, I'm going to have to look and see if they are allowed to ask questions and have response. Because it's a hearing, I, I think that that is probably true. I don't know if it's just a public comment session.
Okay.
Then again, it'd only be on the subject matter.
Yes, but it would only be on the subject matter, that's true. Yes.
Okay. I just, yeah, we'll just need to iron that out so we know how to respond. Okay.
I'll, I'll look into that and get an interpretation of what that means. Okay? You have in your pack, changing courses right now, you have in your pack the Certified Teacher State Supplement Plan. It's very much the same as it has been in the past. We designed it so that there are bands at the beginning and then there are increases, although they're very small, from about what, nearly 15 years up, something like that? We had a conversation about this the other day. Would you like to add anything that there's a little difference in this year's?
Yeah, I think it's quite increased, so the maximum each teacher can give is 84 or 85.
It's 43.
43 in fact.
Thank you for finding at least, I don't have it on my finger right now. That's split into two semesters. They have, and there are guidelines about when they can earn that and when they can't earn that. It's not based on merit, it's based on employment. This is the only supplement that we give. And it's, we receive a larger percentage for supplement than a lot of school systems because our district doesn't provide another supplement. That causes the overall to go down. Okay? So we asked for you to approve that tonight if you're prepared. And we also have in there the EC Teachers Retention Plan. I'm going to have Lisa come up and talk about it because she has re-devised it for this year. One of the areas where, where we struggle and all systems are struggling is attracting and then retaining EC teachers. And there are several districts around us right now that have empty spots in EC classrooms. So talk to us about what you think we should do to help with that.
I would like for you guys to approve my retention budget tonight. I am willing to give the, all of our assistants that work for EC, which they did not get any kind of retention bonus last year, and they work hard. But I would like to give the EC assistants $500, this is one time, one time, and that, they would be paid that in November, the end of November. And I would like to give our EC teachers, related service providers, $750 one time, and that would be paid in December. We do have a high turnover. We currently have a position right now, we're trying to fill at the high school. We've had a teacher leave us for another county. Also, just recruitment challenges in general, we just, there is not people knocking our doors down wanting to come and work. And it's like that in many other counties. The impact on students, you know, we, we need our staff there in order to provide our services for them. And then when we do not have teachers available, it strains our staff who are there because they have to pick up other duties. I myself have been picking up other duties as well, doing IP meetings and referral meetings because we don't have staff. So I would ask that you guys consider passing this for me.
It says that retention bonus is subject to retirement, or so?
It is, yes. So retirement, retirement and insurance is pulled out.
Okay, I follow you.
So yes. It's not a separate check, it's added.
I got you.
Lisa, about how many EC assistants and EC teachers do we have?
Oh, you ask me that and I don't have my phone. I want to say we have...
What, 16?
16 assistants. Is it like 22 teachers? I can give you the total. The total would be, so for my assistants, this would be their benefits and insurance. For November, it would be $9,924. And then for my related services and teachers, in December, would be $17,532.40.
Mr. Shaw, just to comment on that, I think that given the percentage of what you said earlier of the number of Swing County students who qualify for an IEP, that this is something we bring up to the commissioners next time as supplemental funding, just like we do with the teachers' assistance, or the reading.
The reading assistance.
Is because we're looking at, I'm sure, more than we've ever had before.
Yes.
And this is something that we need to do and something that's very important to retain these teachers because of the number of students we have that qualify for IEPs.
Last year, we had, last year, we had close to 400 students, like 370, 80-some students. This year, we have 411 and we're getting ready to do our, we'll do our head count in December. So we'll know what that looks like and I'm sure that it's higher than 411.
Did you tell them that the funding that you're going to use is out of Medicaid?
The Medicaid funding, which is our billable services, is a fee-for-service. We have related service providers, our OT, PT, speech, school psychologists. They can, we generate money off of Medicaid for that. And that's put into a pot that we are able to, to give this to them with.
Okay. That's what's going to be, my next question was going to look in the back and say, do, do we know where it's coming from? But okay, thank you.
We do.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. The only thing left for discussion, unless you all have something else about any of these items, is, are the policies that we, in first reading the last time. One of the policies that I want to draw attention to is a crowdfunding policy. There was a question, I don't remember if it was here or if it was in a small group, and somebody brought up the question, if someone makes a donation to a specific sport that is gender-based, what does that do as far as Title IX is concerned? So for example, if someone gives $100,000 to girls cross-country, that throws an imbalance in funding, which Title IX speaks to. So I sent that question to Ashley Leonard and Ashley said, let me find her words here. "If a large donation," this is a quote from Ashley, okay? "If a large donation is made for a specific sports team of one sex, the district should educate the donor on Title IX and the district's obligation to use funds in an equitable manner. A best practice for promoting equity in sports is to deposit all outside donations into a single athletic fund. The district can request that the donor reconsider the donation, but if the donor wants the total donation to go to a specific team of one sex, the district may have to decline the donation if it cannot raise equivalent funds for other sports teams of the opposite sex. If the district accepts the donation, the district must allocate funds in a way that provides equitable opportunities for both male and female student athletes." That's directly from our attorney, who is and was hired as a Title IX expert for Campbell Shattuck. Okay? I don't know that that changes anything other than we just have to be aware. All right? The other one, the other policy that will raise eyebrows is Policy 30 through 20. And that has to do with field trips and there are some other policies that surround that. There is new language that has been added to that policy because of General Statute 12-3.3. That was passed by legislation this summer that specifically identifies that there are only two sexes to be recognized in North Carolina, male and female. Okay? Because of that, the policy has been revised to make a statement, now just hear this out if you haven't read it, I think you probably have. The policy is revised to state that what should happen if opposite-sex individuals are going to be in the same room. To us, that makes our eyebrows go, why would we do that?
And that's for field trips, just to...
Yes. Yes.
For the public.
Yeah, for field trips, okay? So I believe that RL and Mitch and I looked at this and RL came up with some language that says, I think that I'm quoting this correctly, RL, if I have, if I'm not, I want you to tell me, please. "Students are prohibited from sharing sleeping quarters with anyone of other biological sex as defined in General Statute 12-3.3 during a school trip. Period. However, under extreme circumstances, the parent of all students not of the same biological sex who are required to share sleeping quarters must have provided written permission to the school." Okay? I put that in front of Ashley. She says that language is okay, that we can live with that. All right? I have sent out a question to other surrounding districts from Haywood County to Clay County, all around us, and said, what have you done with this policy? I've only received two responses. Cherokee County passed the revision as it was provided by the North Carolina School Board Association without any adjustment. I haven't had time to really dig into what Haywood County sent, but it sounds to me like they did something very, very similar. They accepted the language from the School Board Association. Okay? I am comfortable, if you are, with accepting the language that RL has proposed. However, if you want to table that policy and have a different look at it, that's your prerogative as well. I think that that deems a level of discussion because I would like a decision at some point. But if you don't want to decide tonight on that one, table it. That's fine.
Okay, good with it.
You good to go? You good to go? Okay. The other one that I want to draw your attention to, I hope that you've read it, is the one that has to do with wireless communication devices. I, RL, Mitch and I looked at this and RL added some or changed some language. I have shared that language with both...
Ryan.
Ryan and Tyler. Thank you. Okay? And they both are good with the language that RL has stated. Should I read it out loud or do you just want to go?
Yeah, just go ahead and read it out loud.
Read it, okay. "School employees," this is just the one paragraph that RL has suggested changing. "School employees will immediately confiscate any wireless communication devices that are unused or displayed or visible in violation of this policy. In general, the confiscated device will be returned to the student at the end of the day. However, an administrator will require a student's parent to recover a confiscated device if the student has violated this policy three times during the school year. Upon the third violation, the student will be prohibited from using any communication device other than those provided by the school for the remainder of the school year. Failure to comply with this restriction will result in additional disciplinary action as outlined in the student handbook. Absent compelling and unusual circumstances, confiscated wireless communication devices will be returned in compliance with the school behavior plan." This is the policy that permits the use of wireless devices during the school day, but not during instructional time. The other policy was they're not allowed from the beginning bell to the end bell at the end of the day. Okay? And Tyler, you have said that you are comfortable for today with allowing them to be used on campus, but not during instruction. Am I correct?
That's a different policy.
That is this policy is the one that we're looking at right now. The other policy from the beginning of the day to the end is a different policy. Okay? I have a copy of it if you want to look at it. But Tyler is already working with allowing the wireless devices to be used during the day, but not during instruction unless there is direct permission from, from the teacher.
And all, those two policies and then I assume the high school handbook, they all, do they all say the same thing? Like, are they all consistent with one another?
They will all be, because they are all consistent with this policy. Now, the middle school has chosen to be more restrictive, which is allowable. Okay? And they, they require that all wireless devices be put away from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. They've done that for a couple of years now. All right? So they, again, they can be more restrictive.
So the handbook can be more restrictive than, than the district policy?
That is my understanding.
But not the opposite way?
You cannot be less restrictive than the policy, nor can you be less restrictive than the law.
Okay. So like, in the, in the part where it says, if it's violated, well, actually before that, it will be returned to them at the end of the school day. And then if that happens three times and a parent comes, I think, is it possible that the handbook at the high school is more restrictive than that? Then I think there's like a 1, 2, 3?
How is it more restrictive? Explain. Explain.
So my first one is, we confiscate it, give it back to the student at the end of the day. The second offense, we confiscate it, we give the student the option to take a day of ISS and/or we lock it in our safe for three days if they want to do that, and we return it to the student at the end of the third day. If you choose the ISS route, which is fine, then we give you, we release that to a parent guardian on the second. The third offense is the same choice, you can lock it up three days, or you can choose the out-of-school suspension, and then increase the out-of-school suspension every occurrence after that. But there is no, you know, we currently don't have in our policy the ban, and we do release it to the parent on the second, second offense and after.
Okay, thank you for that, Mike. Tyler, is, is your handbook more restrictive than this now?
Ours is, first offense, we take it, we can't keep it up. Second offense is a parent can come pick it up. And the third offense, parent has to come pick it up, and then we have suspension tied to the third. And then it continues to escalate with suspension down to, basically you return your phone in, as soon as you come to school, you wouldn't be allowed to have it restricted from you.
So, so there is some variation. They are more restrictive, except for Mike, the academies, which does not have a ban after the third time. And if you approve this policy, that would have to change. Okay?
Because his would have to?
His would have to become more restrictive at that portion.
Because this isn't the third time that a parent would have to come confiscate, or a parent had to come pick it up.
But any consequence on the kid's gonna be?
Say that again.
Any consequence on the kid's gonna be incidental to this policy. So you can do whatever, I mean, whatever you deem is necessary for the kid. This is just for the device.
It said on the second sentence there, Julie, we have a kid, we do not keep the phone, which is different than what I have, because in the first one, it said, you should release it back. I will do that. And like I said, if we're not giving it more strict on the second offense, I release it to a parent and not the third, and that's, that's fine as well. We, we don't currently have a ban. I mean, we can, our, that would end up, what do we do when they bring the ban? It's just out of schools nowadays. It's just not coming to school because they're bringing it home more and more and more. So that becomes, that's why I usually try to give that kid the option to say, because it, it actually hurts worse not having your cell phone for a couple of days. And the parents are usually, you haven't gotten to that point yet, but during our intake meetings, they were saying, I'll make them lock it up because they need to be at school. So if we take that option away, and we just say, all right, you know, we're on a ban, if you got it, what do we do? Out of school, okay, then I'm just, we're just not here, you know? And that's fine, I just, my portion of kids, if you're doing anything, he's not to be at school, and I do that at this point, so I go, all right, it's school, it's school, that's good. And I can do that, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that. Because parents, this gives, what we did, parents have a little bit of say-so. And parents can also say, nah, you ain't doing that. We're gonna take the ISS, take those. Okay, I'm giving you a choice to stay in school. If you don't want to take that, all right, then we, we'll go that route. So as far as for ours, it's like the consequence, our inconsequence, for lack of terms, is, it's like academy. So once you continue enough offenses, you compile enough suspensions that qualifies you for licensing. So if you get to your fifth offense with us, you're gone. Like, so.
I just, yeah, I just make sure whatever they're all saying, they're making sense with one another.
Well, that would be a natural outflow of this. The one piece that I don't want to lose, and I don't want to minimize that, Lisa, in any way, okay? And I appreciate you wanting that consistency. The one piece that I do want to draw attention to is the fact that this requires that the phone be banned after the third day. Okay? And what Mike is saying, what Mike is saying is, that creates a different set of parameters for his students. Because, and it might, for more students, I don't know. Because they may be looking for a reason to go home. And this could be their reason. Now.
This policy for the high school doesn't have to be consistent with Mike's, though, right? They're under different schools.
What, what you said, what you said something as a policy, everybody has? See, those, those are, those are school rules.
They can be more restrictive.
But they can't be less, and they all have to fall kind of under this district law.
They have to fall under this.
I got you.
Okay? Now, we, we have a policy in place now that accomplishes a lot of what is, was wanted by the legislature. These are just new revisions from the School Board Association that they always pass out to us.
What's the law on confiscation?
Pardon me?
On that?
That, that's a law on confiscation? You talk here?
Yeah, for the, like, if you wanted to confiscate the phone, instead of just banning it, like, they don't get it back. Is that lawful?
No.
I didn't think it was, because it's not illegal.
I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know, because you're, I don't know.
I'd be real careful about that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not, yeah, and it's not, it's unlawful, correct?
And it just says they're prohibited from basically bringing it back.
Or use, yeah.
For using it.
Yeah.
Because we had, a few years ago at the high school, we had the ban. We had that after fourth or fifth, whatever it was, you had three sixty-five ban. We had it, and it brought it. You know, and then that's, you know, if you get, right now, with Kristen, that's one kid. You got your own kid, you know, it becomes a, and then the kid just, all right, so you bring it on a ban. I can't even, but one kid had seven hundred, and I think a junior ban. By the time he got done, he just didn't, like, all right, we're gonna pick him up the other day. Yeah, he was up seven days, plus next offense, out of school suspension, had seven hundred. Whatever, junior ban, because he was gonna graduate, I couldn't see. Yeah.
I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to come up with a consensus on this tonight. Unless you all want to sit here and to figure, just say, no, this is what we're done, or if you want to sit here and hash it out, you know? It would seem to me, Cody, just one who likes to move things along, is that we pull this one?
Yeah.
And that we sit down with our, with our principals, and we say, this is what, this is what you as a board want to happen. And then the principals say, and this is how we can make, you understand?
Well, yeah, let's give them an ends and allow them to create the means to get there. I think that's.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the wording. I'm just only sure everything is consistent. And I did mark this, I didn't know if we need to throw in anything that says smartwatches too. And I know it says it's not limited to, but I don't know if we need to add that in the definition.
That is, is.
It's a device, I guess you could call it.
I think that it could be counted as that, but I understand being more specific in your wording. And I don't have the policy in front of me right now.
Well, and it just says anything that has the capability to do voice messaging, text.
Yeah, it does, it says communication device.
Yeah, which a, which a watch does.
Which it would be covered.
I don't know if we wanted to throw that in there.
It wasn't very specific on that, on that.
Yeah. And I'm, just so, I'm great about being really specific about this policy and, and following it to the T and taking up phones at the beginning of the class, just so anybody thinks I'm like, different on that. I think it's great. I think they don't need their phones during instructional time at all. And if every teacher is taking it up, and you said one does the charging station, that, I mean, that's great. I mean, they don't, they don't need them during instructional time. It's hard enough to focus anyways.
And, and you all understand, I, I think it was Casey or someone who asked about this, that when we're talking about other devices that are not school-provided, that's one of the reasons that we, that we really don't allow that, is because all technology devices are communication devices now. All of them. So we require that students use the Chromebook because we can't control those through our systems.
Yeah.
Okay? All right? So we're, we're more closely defining what a communication device is or a wireless device. And then we're going to schedule a time when we can work on the wording for this, this year.
I was gonna say, I will go out there, but there used to be, there's smartwatches on that thing, like, test time, it is counted as a wireless device.
Yeah.
So we'll schedule a time to work on that. I need for you to find out, Sherri, please. There's, there's a point when we're supposed to send our policy to the state. And I need, yes, and I need to know if it's October fifteen or, or four, because if it is, we're a trouble. Would you find that out for me, please?
I just.
We can make it happen.
Yeah.
Thanks.
DA change.
My anniversary.
I think that's all the discussion.
Okay, and then going back, not going back, looking forward at Action Item C, is that something that we're gonna get back to LS three P on by the end of the week, or is it?
Maybe at the wrong, maybe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Action Item C.
Action Item C. Yes, we will get back to LS three P. We won't need, we do not need Action Item C.
Okay, I wanted to make sure about this. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
But that's by the end of the week, we will discuss that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
We'll need to have that discussion via email or some type of technology.
That's fine.
Okay? Unless you all want to get together again.
No, that's fine, we can do that. I, yeah, it's fine, it'll be in writing, we can have it via email or some, some.
I think just, just, yeah, start a little work session amongst yourselves.
Yeah. That's fine.
We can discuss that and the wireless thing. It's gonna be about the fifteenth.
I don't know that it does, RL, I just, is it January?
Oh, we got it.
Okay, so we'll be all right. I just knew there's a time limit. Okay. Can I have just a minute to find out what policy we're approving?
I don't have anything in the Action Item to approve policy. We're at a second reading. This is a second reading.
I forgot to put it in there. Do we need to do something to make that legal so that we can?
What, we, yeah, what?
Which one, the funding?
The one we got, Mark, seventy-three sixty, the crowdfunding.
There are a bunch.
There was a bunch of others that we didn't.
Oh, yeah. They were all okay, I think.
They were all fine.
They were.
Except for these two.
They're the summer policy updates. And the only one that I know that we're striking, that we're not going to vote on tonight, just go. Is the wireless policy, correct?
Correct.
Hey, I know which one that is. So I can list them, I can list them by number?
Okay.
And leave that one out? Or you just want them to have a motion that says all other than?
Do all other than. I think it's conier or concise that way.
You want to add D or replace it with C?
Yeah, we'll replace it. And we'll replace it with C.
Yeah, we already had it, a C.
Yeah, we had a C. So we're replacing the recommendation of the approval of the design value engineering with the board policy acceptance.
Work on the seventy-three, this crowdfunding.
Yes, sir.
In that, you know, we talked about the logo.
Yes, sir.
I don't, is that in there somewhere? I didn't see that.
That was approved?
Yeah.
That was approved last time, in the last meeting.
It was only the, the approved logo through us could be used, yeah.
I think I'm ready, you all are ready.
We're ready.
Okay? I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda with the exception of?
Item eight.
Item eight, including all of the personnel and the minutes from the September tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Motion, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, by short hands? Pass the unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the Teachers' State Supplement Plan and the ECE Teachers' Retention Plan as presented by Ms. Waldrop tonight.
Motion, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, by short hands? Pass the unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve all of the board policies that are second reading tonight, except for forty-three eighteen.
Motion, second.
And just for clarification, forty-three eighteen is a communication device, is it?
Communication device, it's yes.
Okay. So there's motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, by short hands? Pass the unanimous.
To my knowledge, that is all, those are all in Action Items. There are several points of information. Again, I would like to remind you that Mo Green will be here on October the twenty-third, and I would like for you to come to dinner at four forty-five at the high school, please. And I would especially like for you to attend the strategic plan conversation at six o'clock in the Arch Center. If there's anyone who is not going to attend, please let me know, because I'll need to get tickets for all of you. It's, it's a free event, but it's a ticketed event so that they'll make sure that they control the size. Okay? The next regular meeting we have is November the tenth. Is there anything else that we need to do?
I would definitely miss that meeting.
The tenth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Casey, do you want us to try and re, reschedule that?
We'd have to do it earlier, because I'm gonna be in Colorado that week.
Okay.
So.
There's the third.
If we could do it, the, the third, I'm open.
I can do it. I think I can do that.
So if we want tentatively schedule for November the third, then? You get that in print? That's gonna put us, push us forward.
Did it say we needed to schedule a work session, then, and discuss some other stuff before the third?
It can.
Or not?
Yeah, I think some of that can take place via texts. I don't know that there needs to be.
Do we want, do you?
You wanted, we talked about wanting to do all the check-ins.
Yeah, do we need to do that before the third? Or is that something?
Yeah, I would like to, but I know that that's gonna push everybody quite, pretty hard, because that's really about three weeks from now.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll have, and plus, I want everyone to be able to get things together, data and everything else, to be able to have a robust conversation about that.
So just make it part of our regular?
But we're approving NC Star plans on the third, which is still fine. This doesn't affect NC Star. This was kind of a side road I went down just out of my own curiosity, so I don't think it's necessary to approve those.
So why don't we, why don't we work on a date, excuse me, in November, when Casey gets back from, what'd you say, going to Colorado?
Yeah. I'll say we're gonna be together on the twenty-third, if there's anything.
On October twenty-third?
Yeah.
I can't do that, I'm, I'm busy all afternoon.
Yeah, with Mo Green, that's, we're gonna be there, that's what I'm saying, if we need to discuss anything.
I don't think, I don't think we'll schedule anything on that time.
Okay.
Not about this.
I, I really won't have time that, that day. I'm sorry, Mitch. Okay?
Again, this can be later on in November, it can even be in December. It's not a big deal, I just.
Casey, when are you gonna be back from your trip? You know?
Seventeenth.
I say let's just go ahead and go with the third. There's no need, even, even if there is a work session that's done later on in that, while Casey's gone, we can still fill them in on some of that information. I don't see that there's a reason to change it, we'll just do it on the third. Because then we're getting into Thanksgiving the following week. And so, let's just, we'll just leave the words at.
Do you want to sit down, Lisa, with people and talk about that, that cell phone policy between now and the third?
We can.
That's, that's a, that's a forty-five minute discussion.
Yeah, I could feel like that would be better use of our time to get it kind of done beforehand, that's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna put a couple of times out, and if people want to come and attend that, that's fine.
Now, we gotta meet on, and let LS three P know something by Friday.
We don't have to meet. That can be done via communication.
Yeah, I think that Casey just wants to have a conversation.
We gotta do it, yeah.
Yeah.
By text or email?
Phone call can be anything. I think Casey was just wanting to make sure we're all on the same, that we all understand what's being done, and that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and if there's any new direction that we want to give them, as far, you know, are we, like, like it's the gym, we mentioned that earlier, right? Like, I know we all had envisioned a bigger gym. Doesn't sound like we're gonna get it. Are we comfortable with that? Do we want to tell them to hit the drawing board again?
I'd, I'd like to meet together, that's just me.
So, and we do, then, does that need to happen before Friday?
It does, because I'm gonna be gone Friday.
You're leaving Friday?
I'm leaving Friday, mid, or.
I'm leaving Friday, mid, or Thursday midday.
RL? Stop this traffic, sir.
This is business, they stop.
How dare you be retarded?
It don't feel like I'm retired.
I know it does.
We, we can stay ten minutes later tonight if you want to, it don't matter to me.
Yeah, we can do it tonight.
Oh, wait, if that's a discussion, it has to take.
Can we do that?
I don't think we, we have, if we're gonna discuss it, you gotta discuss it, it's cause it's still part of a meeting if we all stand around.
Do you, when will you be back?
I'll be back Saturday night.
We wanna try and, and, we can put them off until Tuesday. It's just two days, okay, and then get together next Monday? Is that alright?
Twentieth.
Is that okay? Volleyball's over, right?
Let's do it early.
Four, three?
Uh, four is fine, I've got volleyball canceled, yeah, it's gonna be next Monday.
So four o'clock, Monday, downstairs.
Okay.
And that way we can get to them, give them something by five o'clock on Monday.
Yes.
They're four, eight hours.
Alright. Four, four. And that is.
So we don't have anything the week of Halloween, we wanna schedule something for then, I mean, we got the rest open.
We'll see if we can do that.
That's the twentieth, right?
Yes, sir. And don't forget that Thursday is Hall of Fame awards, and Friday night is the Hall of Fame ballgame. It's, uh, where they'll present those to our inductees.
If you can, Saturday's the golf tournament.
Thursday's the day, and the ceremony, Friday's the game, and then.
Saturday's the golf tournament?
Well, twenty-fifth is the golf tournament.
Sure, yeah, the next Saturday, that's right, it's fun, so.
Alright, get everybody scared, you have anything, you wanna add, everybody else? That's even on my other calendar.
When is it?
Can you send them an invite?
I didn't get anybody at Wes, so I don't get any updates anymore.
I think that's it, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? Raise your hands, making adjourn. I do, hold on. It's on my other calendar.
Done, done.
Hey, I was thinking it.
Yes.
Let's talk about.